Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the Senate Committee on Judiciary to Order. We have four bills that were scheduled for public hearing and possible work session. Some of the bills will not be able to be worked today since we're waiting for paperwork. I also have at least one member en route that's going to be giving testimony as well. So I'm going to go ahead and start with what we hope will be the shorter of the four. And this is Senate Bill 826, so I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. Josh, if you can give us the overview, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Senate Bill 826 includes qualified victim services programs that are administered by tribal government within the scope of the victim counseling privilege. The bill has no fiscal impact and no revenue impact.
All right. I have two individuals that are on the list to testify. That is Woodrow Starr and Erin Naught. And I know Representative, excuse me, Senator Roblin's here. If those three will come forward. Phil, I'm assuming you're just here? Yep, okay.
He's the shepherd.
Who wants to lead off?
I can start because I'll go quickly. For the record, Senator Arne Roblin, Senate District Five, most of the coast into Sheridan and Fall City. There has been, I think, an exceptionally long history of Oregon for most states. We are the only state that has a legislative commission on Indian services. And that connection between tribes and the legislature has been a strong one that continues to build. And through this committee, we've done things with law enforcement. We've done some other stuff to help raise the status of our tribes to the place where they need to be as sovereign nations within our nation. And this is one more of those bills that tries to correct something and gives the same status to people who have had the training and are counseling people, the same status with regard to confidentiality that exists for other people in our government, whether it be federal or state. And I appreciate you hearing it. From my perspective, it's just the right thing to do. It continues the development between our nine recognized tribes and the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready for any questions.
And do you have time to hear the rest of the testimony?
I will.
Okay. And gentlemen, so Woodrow or Erin, whoever would like to go next?
Yeah, I'll go. Thank you. And I'd like to add, I've given the written testimony, and I'd like to add to that, you know, during my experience as a tribal police officer, eight years, and then 25 years with the Bureau of Indian Affairs as a special agent for them, you know, of had some experience with victims who would come forward and want to, they're not sure how they want to give their information out, they're not sure if there's anything that can protect them. And we have tribal advocates on our reservations, and in particular on Yumitella Reservation. And sometimes during advocacy, information comes out in certain ways, and we need to protect that information for our people. And I know from personal experience of rape victims who have been victimized, their family has been victimized by the perpetrator's extended family. And that occurs on the reservation. Yes?
Woodrow, I forgot, I wasn't listening close enough. I didn't hear you place your name on the record. We need to have that for.
I'm sorry.
Prospero.
My name is Woodrow Starr.
Okay.
And I'm elected member of the Board of Trustees on the Confederate Tribes of the Yumitella Indian Reservation. I represent the Kaiyus, the Walla Walla, and Yumitella people on my reservation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just to continue, and so we have small communities there, and the information that just starts buzzing when a victim speaks up really affects a lot of other issues. And then, a lot of times, we can't, we don't make it into federal court, the victims remain quiet. They're afraid to speak out, they're afraid to talk, they don't trust us anymore because of how the information isn't protected. They said, "Well, we told you, you know, and you didn't help us, and I don't want to talk to you anymore." And that kind of really closes up a lot of issues in that it just blows it out bigger because we have children involved, we have a lot of other family members involved on the reservation that are also victimized just by witnessing acts of violence and other things. So I wanted to add that to all our written testimony that our tribe's putting forth today and let you know that we have federal grants, totally 100 percent federal grants on our reservation for our advocacy programs. And they have the same requirements the state does, but we just like to see the tie-in with the state and further that protection because we have a lot of folks, because of our jurisdiction, it just gets so complicated. We have non-Indians on our reservation, and they get victimized, they come to us for their services. And we have tribal members living off the reservation, and they come to us when they get victimized, and we provide their services regardless of where they're living and their racial status. So this is really important. This would really provide for the continuity that goes along that we're now experiencing and making things better, safer for our people. Thank you.
Woodrow, thank you very much. Erin?
Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, my name is Erin Naught. I'm the Legislative Director for the Oregon Attorney General and the Department of Justice. You're in support of Senate Bill 826. Senate Bill 826 comes from another bill that we passed in 2015, which was House Bill 3476. That bill, bipartisan bill, extended confidentiality and privileged protections to advocates to help survivors have a safe space to make report of sexual assault and have that discussion, knowing that it would be kept confidential and that they would retain control over how that story was used. At the time that we put that bill together, we didn't realize that the definition of advocate for tribal members was different and located in a different statutory provision, so we inadvertently failed to include tribal advocates. That was a mistake at the time. It's a mistake that we're here two years later to correct, so we are in support of Senate Bill 826 as written.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for anyone on the panel? All right. Woodrow, thank you very much for coming over from Pendleton. I know it's, we are told from the eastern Oregon, it's really not that far, but it is far. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wanted to give testimony on 826? Not seeing anyone come forward, we'll close that public hearing. I believe we have all the paperwork. We're going to open up the work session on 826. And Senator Denbro, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move Senate Bill 826 to the floor.
With?
With a do-pass recommendation.
And Senator Denbro has just moved Senate Bill 826 to the floor with a do-pass recommendation. Any discussion? Any objections? So order, we'll have Senator Roblin be our carrier for 826 on the floor. We'll close the work session. And now we're going to be opening up our public hearings, and it looks like... All right. So I have a 795 is the one I'm probably going to open up. The question I have for those who are signed up on 795, I only have Tracy Berry on the other two bills, 960 and 884. So if others who have signed up on 795 are wanting to give testimony on 960 and 884, if you'll just raise your hand so I will know who's who, all right? Okay. So why don't we do this? I'm going to have Senator Gelsner and Senator Loris Monas Anderson come forward first. I'm going to go ahead and open up public hearings for all three of the bills so we can just make certain we cover their testimony, and then we'll figure out if we're going to break out from there. So we're opening up public hearings on Senate Bill 795, Senate Bill 884, and Senate Bill 960. And Josh, if you can give us the quick overview or summary.
Certainly.
Or a longer one, whichever you like.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Senate Bill 795 requires the provider of a sexual assault medical assessment or a law enforcement officer to contact a victim advocate and make reasonable efforts to ensure that the advocate is available to the victim at the medical facility at which the assessment is conducted. There is a -1 amendment before you today for purposes of the public hearing that requires the process to comply with the protocols and procedures of the counties' multidisciplinary child abuse teams, and we do not yet have the paperwork on 795. Senate Bill 826, we just heard, it was a good bill. Senate Bill 884 directs the Department of Justice to conduct a study on creating a Bill of Rights for sexual assault survivors. And finally, Senate Bill 960 requires that law enforcement agencies have a policy reclassifying sexual assault forensic kits as non-anonymous when a victim who did not previously participate in the creation of a sex assault report subsequently participates in the creation of that report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. I'm State Senator Lori Monas Anderson, and I represent East Monmouth County, Gresham, Troutdalewood Village, and Fairview. I'm delighted to come before you with Senate Bill 795. It's been wonderful to work with Michelle Roland Schwartz, who's the Executive Director of the Oregon Attorney General Sexual Assault Task Force. Basically, what Senate Bill 795 does, it strengthens the Oregon representative, personal representative law. That states a victim may choose, may choose, a personal representative to support them during the medical forensic exam. However, Oregon's law does not specifically require the medical professional or law enforcement to notify the victim of this right. What Senate Bill 795 ensures is a victim of sexual assault be able to discuss their option to have advocacy services in person so the victim may make an informed decision about their care. Allowing for an advocate to be present during an exam provides immediate support and presents the opportunity for victims to be informed of additional resources that are available to them to assist in their recovery, including the Address Confidentiality Program, counseling resources, safety planning, crime victims' compensation, and follow-up services to provide ongoing support at the consent of the victim. And this is best practice, and it is recommended in the National Protocol for Sexual Assault Medical Forensics Examinations. The victim advocate can offer crisis intervention and advocacy services to victims, their families, and their friends. Dispatching a victim advocate would not delay or compromise any emergency medical care needed. Victims can decline advocacy services, they can decline these services at any time. And also, medical personnel and/or law enforcement should reference their local county sexual assault response team protocols to identify whether the advocacy program is the local community-based nonprofit, the District Attorney Victim Assistant Program Advocate, or the tribal program advocate. The amendment to Senate Bill 795 would direct responders to comply with their local multidisciplinary response team protocols and will not impeach child abuse assessment protocols. So I really urge you that you will go forward with passage of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Gelsner.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Przezansky, members of the committee. For your record, my name is Sarah Gelsner. I'm the State Senator from Corvallis in Albany, and I would just like to thank Senator Monas Anderson and Michelle Roland Schwartz for the excellent work on this bill. Senator Monas Anderson said everything that needs to be said. She did a great job, and I urge your support of the measure and the amendment.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the senators? I'm going to put a question out. I've talked to some of the advocates yesterday. I don't know if you all want to respond or allow them. My only reservation in reading how 795 reads, it appears that, I'm not sure what communication is going to go with the victim as to their ability to direct what's going to happen, who's going to be there to assist them or not assist them. So that's kind of a general question, and based on Senator Monas Anderson's testimony, what I heard was that this was to ensure that the victim is aware that these services are available. But reading the bill, it appears that it does in fact require either law enforcement or the medical facility to make contact to bring someone to that location. My biggest concern is to make certain we don't traumatize the victim to the point that here's someone that they don't know, that's in the room, they're saying they're here to help, and at the same time, not knowing where their mind may be, meaning the victim's at that time, how do we ensure that we're not going to be imposing something on them that they are just not ready or able to handle?
We want to make sure that the victim has a choice and should not be intimidated at all. And I know that Michelle and I were talking about it earlier, and I'll let her go into more detail, but that is not in the intent of the bill to force someone on the victim. But I know that many victims, and I think they may be able to explain why, the process.
No, I just want to get that on the record so we make certain we answer that, so we can make sure we have clarity. Any other comments or questions for the senators? Thank you all very much. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and ask Michelle Roland Schwartz, Bebe Beltran, and I'm going to ask Erin Naught to also come up with them.
And, Mr. Chair, I need to leave to go to Ways and Means in a minute.
Okay.
On the other two, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and take your testimony. I apologize.
That's okay.
Before we continue to testify on those, I forgot that we opened for all three because I knew you had more than one. Which other one did you want to give testimony on?
I have, I have all four today. I have the other two. I have 884 and 960.
If you'd like to go ahead and make statements on each of those, and then we'll pick up on the others.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence. Again, for the record, Sarah Gelsner, State Senator from Senate District Eight. Senate Bill 960, we'll start with that one, is a follow-up on Melissa's Law that we did last session related to the testing of rape kits. We had some questions after the passage of the bill around the definition of an anonymous kit, what we were testing, and what would happen when a victim changed her mind or was not sure that she wanted to proceed with prosecution at that time. The concept before you was vetted by the task force that came out of that group. It's been in front of the DA's and others and is a consensus fix. And it's pretty simple, and I'd urge your eye vote.
All right.
On that one. And then, should I move on to 884? Do you have questions?
No, why don't we go ahead and ask if there's questions on either of those?
Okay. And then Senate Bill 884, we have Brenda Tracy here and Jackie Swanson, who will talk to you at length. I sent to the judiciary staff the concept that we would like to go into the bill, which is Sexual Assault Survivors Bill of Rights. We would like to work with the chair and the staff to work on which of the concepts are best to move forward, the session in which we need to move forward. But it's basically trying to create in one place a statement of what survivors of sexual assault in Oregon can expect in terms of access to services, their right to access information, timing to access information.
All right. Thank you. Again, questions for Senator Gelsner on either of those two bills? Sarah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So now we're going to go ahead and continue testimony on 795, and so I'm going to, again, ask Michelle, Bebe, and Erin to please come forward.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Przezansky, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Michelle Roland Schwartz. I'm Executive Director of the Oregon Attorney General Sexual Assault Task Force, a statewide nonprofit organization whose mission is to advance a collaborative, multidisciplinary approach to the prevention of and response to sexual violence in Oregon. I also want to thank Senator Monas Anderson, who did actually an excellent overview of the bill, our chief sponsors, including Senator Manning, for their support of this bill. So the overarching goal of Senate Bill 795 is to increase access to services available to sexual assault survivors when they present for medical care. Oregon is second in the country behind Alaska in rates of sexual violence against women. One in four women in Oregon will experience sexual violence compared to the national average of one in five. So we know that we have high rates of sexual violence, and we have an opportunity when victims present to the hospital, we have a window in which we can provide that immediate access to advocacy services. And believe that this bill would open that window, preventing delays in advocacy services where victims later come to advocacy services, if they come to advocacy services at all, to help with long-term trauma, safety planning, and access to other services. The bill would enable victims to speak with an advocate in person to learn about the breadth of services available to them, ensuring that they're fully informed about their options when they choose to accept or decline advocacy services. It is considered best practice nationally to have an advocate present during a medical forensic care and allows the victim to receive that immediate support and crisis intervention and be aware of all the resources available to them. The supportive response provided by a victim advocate in tandem with a sexual assault nurse examiner mitigates trauma and reduces symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, and victims who receive support throughout the medical legal process are more likely to continue to engage in the criminal justice process and other services. And for these reasons, we urge your support of Senate Bill 795, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bebe?
Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, for the record, my name is Bebe Beltran, and I am the Executive Director of Sexual Assault Support Services, or SAS. SAS is a nonprofit organization providing outreach, advocacy, and support to survivors of sexual violence to their partners, families, and friends throughout Eugene Springfield and the rest of Lynn County. SAS advocates listen, believe, support, accompany, offer information and referrals, and provide peer counseling to survivors of sexual violence past and present. We maintain a 24-hour crisis and support line and provide 24-hour emergency advocacy for survivors of sexual assault and sexual abuse. We're the ones who respond in the aftermath of a sexual assault and to a medical facility. And what we know is that in the immediate aftermath of a traumatic event, survivors often experience many complex emotions, including grief, sadness, anger, and confusion. Navigating complicated systems can be a challenge for anybody, but for somebody who has just experienced trauma, it can be extremely overwhelming. Advocates play a crucial role in empowering survivors by informing them of their options and rights. Without advocates, many survivors would be unaware of the multitude of available services and resources and may not access the support they deserved. Senate Bill 795 is about informed consent and meaningful access. SAS advocates work from an empowerment-based approach and provide information and options rather than advice. We believe survivors are in the best position to determine what is right for their situation. Senate Bill 795 would ensure survivors of sexual violence are fully informed about potential outcomes and processes by having access to an advocate in the acute aftermath of an assault. The impacts of sexual violence and trauma are far-reaching and involve many complex systems. Senate Bill 795 would ensure that survivors have accurate information, and as other folks have said already before, the survivor can decline services at any time. So really, it is about providing autonomy to survivors, empowering them, and making sure that they have as much information as possible about what's to come.
All right. Erin?
Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, my name is Erin Naught. I'm the Legislative Director for the Attorney General and the Oregon Department of Justice. You're in support of Senate Bill 795, largely echoing other testimony. We have a range of services available for survivors, but they are only as effective as they are known. If we can't relay their existence to the individuals who need them, especially early in the process, they are less effective. The Department of Justice also believes that Senate Bill 795 does represent an identified best practice for reducing trauma and helping survivors sort of get through the process of coming to terms with what has happened to them with early counseling and other forms of services. So we do support Senate Bill 795 as written.
All right. Questions? Senator Denbro first?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I think this is a great bill. Thank you for your work on this. Where are there states on this issue? Do, you know, are there many other states that have advocates and, you know, a full complement of services, or how do we stack up?
Absolutely. Chair Przezansky, Senator Denbro, that's a great question. There are a range of advocacy services in other states. I can speak for myself as someone who practiced advocacy in Arizona and did medical response there, that we worked very closely with the hospitals, with law enforcement, and other providers to make sure that we could get advocacy services, immediate advocacy services in the hospital. There are a number of other states that have personal representative laws, and they vary in their practice. California, New Jersey, and other states where victims are eligible to have a personal representative, and some states go further and say that there is a requirement that you should, as a medical provider and law enforcement, actually contact an advocate to be able to come out to the hospital. So we would, in essence, just be strengthening Oregon's already strong personal representative law, but ensure that advocates are called out to the hospital.
All right. So I just want to go back again and want to go over the setting the record. Senator Monas Anderson made some comment, alluded to notification to a victim. So what is the current protocol that we have now in giving that notice, either from law enforcement, which could be the first point of contact for the victim, and/or for the medical providers if they present themselves to the hospital, or in conjunction with that?
I don't know if you want to answer this, based on Lynn County?
Sure. Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, so the question, as I understand it, is essentially what protocols are in place to initiate an advocacy process, is that right, or an advocacy response?
Both in the sense of what notice is given to the victim that the services are there if they want them, and also what, if any, steps are being taken by law enforcement or by the medical providers in, one, getting that information to them in the sense of informing them, or are they taking other steps to alert an advocate?
All right. Well, Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, what I can speak to is what happens in my community. So I know that every county is different, and every county has SART protocols. So who responds and when they respond and who contacts them varies. In Lynn County, our SART protocols stipulate that any time a patient presents at the ER and indicates sexual assault, wherever that may be, so that could be a triage, that could be back in the room, that the medical provider, if it's a nurse or if it's a triage nurse, would actually initiate that contact. So if that's if the survivor went to the emergency room first. If they initiate law enforcement first, then law enforcement would call our crisis line, just the same number that the nurse or medical staff would call as well, call our crisis line, and then they will dispatch an advocate. So as far as like what medical providers are informing survivors, I actually can't speak to that since I'm not a medical provider, but what I can say is that our SART protocols say that the survivors are to be informed about advocacy services just kind of as a broad statement because it's best for advocates to explain what we're supposed to do or what we do. So that's what I can answer, but I believe that there is a nurse testifying later who may better be able to answer that question.
Okay. Well, that question's going to be posed because I really want to make sure we have the records clear on this. Any other questions? Thank you all very much. So what I'm going to do is I'm looking at who else is going to be testifying on the other two bills, so I'm kind of jumping around as to those who I don't think are going to be testifying on the other two bills. So I'm going to go ahead and bring up Patty Kenyon, Brendan Murphy, if I can read that correctly, and Kevin Campbell.
Chair Przezansky, members of the committee, for the record, my name is Kevin Campbell. I'm here today actually on behalf of a few different groups, but my testimony will be very brief. I'm here in support of Senate Bill 795 on behalf of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police and the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, also here on behalf of the Oregon Association of Hospitals and Health Systems. Of course, in the bill, we are the two parties identified with the responsibility for contacting a victim advocate and making efforts to ensure that a victim advocate is present when a victim of sexual assault is contacted or indicates that they've been a victim. My comments will be very brief because many of the issues have already been mentioned, but it's clear that a sexual assault victim is best helped when law enforcement, medical assessment providers, and victim advocates all work together. And when it is the victim's choice to accept the services of a victim advocate, each piece of that puzzle is far more effective for the victim, and they're actually cared for. That's the priority in this. There are many benefits to approaching it this way, but the main one is that the victim is cared for properly. And so on behalf of the hospital association, the only clarification that we wanted on the record, and I talked to Michelle Roland Schwartz about this, is obviously there are a variety of victim advocate services in different areas around the state. We just wanted to make sure on the record that law enforcement or the medical assessment providers are not responsible for providing victim advocates, but that they are responsible for contacting and activating the victim advocacy resource. for contacting and activating the victim advocacy resources that are available in each county based on those protocols, both for adults and children of sexual assault. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're supportive. We believe that victim advocacy services are critical. And with that, glad to answer any questions, and I will turn it over.
All right. Thank you. Who's going to go next?
Chair Prozansky, I was going to go next. My name is Brendan Murphy. Chair Prozansky, members of the committee, good morning. I am a Marion County Deputy District Attorney. I am here on behalf of the Oregon District Attorneys Association, and we also support seven bill, 795. It's a good bill, in fact, as you all know now, because it just allows more information to get to the victim as quickly as possible. But I would also like to highlight that in my experience as a sexual assault prosecutor, that victims who are given support early on in the process and then choose to proceed with the criminal justice system, I believe have a fundamentally different interaction with the criminal justice system when they have early, accurate, and thorough information about the systems that can be provide services to them. And getting them that information as quickly as possible really results in a fundamentally different experience for survivors. I would also note that I'm the Marion County Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team co-chair, and I don't see anything in here that would cause me concern as it applies to child abuse protocols. I think that this is squarely in line with that. And so I would also echo Chair Prozansky, your concerns. ODAA would agree with that, that there's nothing in this bill that we're anticipating that would require a victim to work with an advocate if they so chose not to. I think this bill and ODAA's intent on it is to give victims who choose to avail themselves of these services as much information as quickly as possible in an accurate way. And I want to be clear about that, because I think that's appropriate. We're not trying to force the victim to do anything they're not comfortable doing. And so with that, with any questions, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Patty?
Good morning, Chair Prozansky and members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. I'm here in support of Senate Bill 795. For the record, my name is Patricia Kenyon. I'm a nurse with 40 years of experience working in emergency departments. I have cared for sexual assault victims most of that time. I now work in Samaritan Albany General as the supervisor of Sarah's Place, the only clinic in the state that is for survivors of sexual assault. That is all that we see. I also chair the Medical Forensic Committee of the Attorney General Sexual Assault Task Force, and I sit on the Government Affairs Committee of the International Association of Forensic Nurses. This bill is exactly what we do. When I am at the hospital and a survivor comes in, an advocate is called at the same time. It is not, if I'm called, they're called. However, the patient has the right to choose whether that advocate comes into the room or not. I am the one at the medical facility that will talk about the services provided, what options are available to them, and I talk very, very highly, excuse me, of the advocates to provide as much information to allow that person to make a decision about having the advocate come in. I have a sense of panic when the person says, no, I do not want an advocate. When that advocate is available, I know that they will respond to the emotional needs, provide any other information that I have left out. It allows me to really concentrate on the medical and the forensic needs of that patient. I know that when an advocate is present, the rates of PTSD go down. I know that when an advocate is available, the likelihood of that person continuing on with advocacy with the criminal justice system goes up. So it provides for public safety. It also, more importantly, provides for the emotional and physical well-being of that patient. I fully, fully support, excuse me, fully support having an advocate available and frankly find it surprising when they are not. So.
Thank you. Questions for anyone on the panel? Thank you all very much. Thank you. So I have Brenda Tracy as the last individual signed up for 795. I know, Mary, you want to give testimony on 884. Is there anyone else who wants to testify on 795? Why don't you go ahead and come on up, Jaclyn?
Okay. Good morning, Chair Prozansky and members of the committee. My name is Brenda Tracy. I'm here in support of 795. Pertaining to my own personal story, in 1998, when I was drugged and gang raped by four football players, I was not given an advocate at all through any part of the process, even though I chose to prosecute. I have to wonder what would have happened to me and my life had I been given an advocate. I was not advised of my rights. I was not advised of resources or help. What I knew is that I had gotten a rape kit, I had chosen to prosecute, and then when I was told I didn't have a good case and I decided not to cooperate with prosecution any longer, that was it. That was all there was. So then I was left to try to deal with the trauma, and I had no one. So this bill is extremely important for survivors. I absolutely understand that having that person in your corner could literally mean the life, the difference between life and death. I've talked several times, very publicly and very openly, about how suicidal I was. And unfortunately, there are rape victims who do commit suicide or just live a life of repercussions and consequences, PTSD and eating disorders and alcohol and drug addiction and all of these things, which I think could be mitigated if we intervene sooner. Just having the option means everything. The medical process is one thing. For me, I look at it this way, as a survivor and a victim, you know, the medical process is one thing, the criminal process and prosecution and talking to the police is a whole nother thing, and then there's the advocate. And for me, I feel like the advocate is the one person that is there for me. So regardless of what's in the news and regardless of what happens to different victims, you feel as though that person is just there for you. Bibi Beltran is going to be there for me and talk to me about what my rights are and not have any type of a hidden agenda either, which we've seen time and time again over years. With my own case, there was an agenda. We still see it today, that there are conflicts of interest and there are things that go on, but that advocate is just there for that person. So that relationship is critical and crucial. And so I just wanted to lend my voice as a survivor. My rape happened almost 20 years ago, but my story still happens today, and we can help stop that by making sure that victims have the choice to have an advocate there for them. So I'm very much in support of this bill, and I hope that you just move it quickly and everybody votes yes. So thank you.
Jaclyn?
Good morning, Chair Prozansky and members of the committee. My name is Jaclyn Swanson. I'm an attorney in Portland, Oregon. I personally was a sexual assault victim advocate in California before I ever attended law school. Actually, the reason why I chose to go to law school was because of my experience as a sexual assault victim advocate and watching the way in which victims were treated within the criminal justice system. The unique dynamics of sexual assault all too often prevent victims from reporting the crime, as we have recognized here in Oregon through our passage of multiple bills supporting survivors' right to, for example, come forward at a later date and initiate a prosecution. But many advocates can attest to how difficult it is for victims, especially given the attitudes of doubt and blame that we see in our society, especially when it comes to sexual assault. Victim advocates can be extremely effective in overcoming these barriers. They provide victims with information, emotional support, and proactive assistance when they need. And when sexual assault victims choose to report the crime, advocates can be a critical ally within the criminal justice process, not only to the survivors, but as well as to law enforcement and the prosecution. There have indeed been a number of studies done in this area, although they're limited, the research does suggest that, rather, the consistent conclusion is that advocacy services facilitate victim recovery and increase access to other services in the community response system. With regard to a question that was asked earlier about what other states have adopted laws similar to this, I was looking at my phone while the question was being asked to try to determine that for you. I know for a fact California, New Jersey, Florida, Iowa, New York, Texas, and Washington all have laws relating to victim advocacy in the presence during a sexual assault forensic examination. Here in Oregon, our law, ORS 147425, allows a victim to have a personal representative present during a forensic exam, but has absolutely no provisions regarding notification. So whereas, for example, in California, the statute very clearly delineates that a victim has a right to a sexual assault victim advocate during the presence of a forensic medical exam, and the medical facility must inform the victim of their right to have that in writing and orally in order to allow the victim to assert that right and privilege. In Oregon, we don't have a corollary. So I think that this bill, 795, would actually fill that gap. I'd be also happy to provide additional information regarding other statutes and other jurisdictions that are similar to this. If it pleases the committee, just let me know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions? All right. So Jaclyn, I guess the one thing that, based on what you're saying and what I'm picking up in other testimony, 795 doesn't have any directive to the hospital or to the law enforcement as to giving the notice to the victim. And so I really think that that's part of what I'd like to see what the other statutes say, because again, I think this is one of those things, if we're coming in to do this, I want to make certain that that happens, because based on what I heard Brenda's testimony included is that even though she reported it, District Attorney's Office comes involved, I'm assuming Benton County at the time, there was no notice to her that there was actually a victim services department or division at the DA's office to even make her aware of that.
Yes. Yes, I believe that's correct, and I also believe that that's one of the issues that we'd like to give testimony on later, SB 884 regarding to sexual assault victims' rights. One of the rights that I think we'd like to see enshrined is the victim's right to notification, not only of the rights, but of the ability to have an advocate present.
Okay. We'll get to that one in a second. Is there any other questions regarding 795? All right. And I understand there's no one else who wanted to give testimony on 795, so I'm going to go and close the public hearing on 795. We're now going to go ahead and take testimony, continue testimony on Senate Bill 884. And I have Brenda wanting to give testimony, and I guess Jaclyn, you will also want to give some testimony. And then I have Mary Sell, who'd like to also testify. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wants to testify on 884? All right, ladies, however you want to present.
Go ahead. Well, Chairman Prozansky, members of the committee, still Jaclyn Swanson. Currently, Senate Bill 884 is a placeholder bill that directs the Attorney General to essentially conduct a study about sexual assault victims' rights and whether or not we should adopt such a bill. I know Senator Gelsner testified earlier. We have worked with her and spoken with her and have provided some suggestions of what those rights might look like. For the most part, in what we've seen ever since adoption of the Federal Sexual Assault Survivors' Bill of Rights back in October of 2016, a number of other jurisdictions have followed suit. The rights that we're looking to enshrine essentially are corollaries to the rights, well, rather, the requirements set forth in Melissa's Law, which this committee passed and passed unanimously through the Senate and House here in Oregon last year. Those rights would include, for example, the right for a victim to be notified about what their rights are under the Oregon Constitution and the Oregon statutes, the right to be notified at the time a request is submitted to an approved laboratory to process and analyze evidence collected during the investigation of the offense, the right to know what the results are, whether or not there was a comparison of the DNA sample entered into CODIS and if there was a hit. There were a number of other rights that mostly pertain to the victim's access to information, because one thing that we see over and over again in these cases is, unfortunately, sexual assault victims, especially prior to the initiation of a prosecution, simply aren't afforded with the same rights as crime victims are entitled to under our other statutes and our state constitution. One of the primary reasons for that, of course, is that generally speaking, under our Oregon Crime Victims' Rights statutes, a crime victim isn't designated a crime victim entitled to the rights until a prosecutor makes that decision. And unfortunately, for a number of sexual assault victims, their case will just simply never reach that stage. So we would like to introduce a bill providing survivors with basic rights involving their access to sexual assault forensic medical exams and what information they're entitled to receive at the outset once they've reported the crime to police.
All right. Thank you. Brenda?
Senator Prozansky, members of the committee, my name is Brenda Tracy, still. This bill, last session when we did Melissa's Law, we basically really focused on the rape kits and the backlog and everything, and a lot of that bill is, shall, you shall have, the police shall do this and shall do that, which is not a right necessarily. So as with my case, I believe if I'm not incorrect, I was supposed to be given an advocate once I decided to prosecute, but a lot of times that word "shall" doesn't equate into people doing things. So many of my rights were violated in my case, and unfortunately, I didn't know that my rights were violated until after the fact, which is normally what happens with rights, is people don't know they've been violated until after the fact, and then it's too late. I see this as a common sense thing, that people should have the right to get a rape kit and to be treated fairly and to have the right to information and to find out what's going on with their case. I think that sexual assault victims should be treated like other crime victims, and we should be afforded the same rights as other crime victims. Like what Jackie said, to reach that threshold is unfortunate, because most of us don't reach that threshold, and so we don't qualify for those rights. So Jackie and I, this last year, we lobbied in Washington, DC for the federal Survivor Bill of Rights that was unanimously passed through Congress, which is very unusual. And the House, both sides, everybody got together on this, because it's not a party issue. Sexual assault is a human issue, and this is our adaptation of that bill at the federal level. There are, I believe, about 25 states right now. There's about 20 to 25 states right now looking at adopting a civil survivor bill of rights. And I think Oregon has been a leader on some of these issues. I think that we should continue to be a leader on these issues and set the example for other states to follow of how you treat sexual assault victims. So I would urge that we figure out, I don't know all the processes, so figure out how to get this amendment going, to get this bill figured out, so that we're doing the best thing we can with survivors in our state. I think it speaks volumes to our members of our state and Oregonians that we care enough that, you know, you do have rights. This is a crime, and we have to start treating sexual assault and rape as a crime. It's not just something that happens. And I feel many times we don't treat it as a crime. So I would just urge that we move on this and get the amendments in and figure out what we want to put in the Bill of Rights, and I thank you for your time on this.
All right. Thank you again. Questions? So ladies, I do have a couple of questions I want to follow up as to rights. There's statements that Brenda, you made regarding not having victims' rights. I mean, the victims' rights, and Jaclyn, you can help out on this, is something that came into existence, if I'm not mistaken, after the passage of the, in 1994, of the three different crime victims' bills and the victims' rights. I'm not sure when we actually codified them, but they apply to all crimes, correct?
Yes, they apply to all crimes.
So I'm trying to figure out, you know, the thing is, as a chair, I'm looking at this proposal is to set up what appears to be a different set of Bill of Rights. And so we need to set a record as to why we would need a separate set of victims' rights for a particular type of crime as compared to someone else coming in here and saying there should be victim rights for whatever else as a different crime.
And I think one of the primary issue here is that a lot of our crime victims' rights in Chapter 147, as well as the rights guaranteed in our Oregon Constitution, again, they attach after the initiation of a charge. It's the prosecutor who ultimately makes the decision of whether or not a victim is a victim of crime entitled to the rights under those provisions. And the problem with that here, with what we've seen, especially with sexual assault victims obtaining forensic medical examinations, which is primarily what this Bill of Rights would address, the rights to sexual assault victims who are undergoing those procedures, it doesn't attach at that undergoing those procedures, it doesn't attach at that stage. Certainly, you know, unfortunately, there are very low incidences of arrest rates, just as there are very low incidence of reporting rates, and there are very, very low incidence of prosecution. The sexual assault survivors' rights that we're talking about specifically here, again, primarily have to do with the rights associated with obtaining a forensic medical examination, which is unique in the context of sexual assault. Other victims of crime do not have their body essentially placed into evidence in the same way. And so recognizing that victims have certain rights to information about what the results of that kit is after it's been tested, making sure they have information about the right to receive a victim advocate, for example, and be notified of it. Again, those are issues that are very specific to sexual assault in particular. It's not as if we are trying to exclude other victims of crime. It's just that these, this particular subclass of victims have specific needs that we just don't see in other areas.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all very much. I'm going to ask you to step back, because I have Mary Sell is going to give testimony on this bill, and then we'll bring Brenda back up for her testimony on 960.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Prozansky, members of the committee. Mary Sell here with Oregon Criminal Defense Lawyers Association. I am testifying on Senate Bill 884. At this point, we had reached out to kind of find out what was going to be placed into this bill, and based on testimony this morning and the fact that there's not an amendment yet, clearly it's a placeholder. We really just want to kind of be part of that conversation. We can't say that we're neutral, and we can't say that we support yet without knowing what's going to go into that. And so really, the only reason why I'm testifying this morning is just to kind of highlight that for the committee, that we really just kind of want to at least be aware of what's happening. When we initially read it, it looks to be that it's going to kind of initiate a conversation and then have some kind of possible work group. If that's going to happen, you know, we would like to have a couple of conversations. Based on testimony this morning, it sounds like it actually might just be created without having, without pushing this back into the next session. And so we'll just want to track that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask Erin Naught to please come forward. Erin, I didn't give you any notice on this, but I did want to, as you know how the chair has handled these type of various issues where there's bills asking to have a work group or study done, my preference is to do that internally, as we've done with changing our rape statutes and stuff. I'm wondering if this is something that we can, in fact, do through that process, instead of putting something into codes, asking or directing for a work group to actually be convened.
Chair Prozansky, members of the committee, again, Erin Naught, Legislative Director for the Department of Justice. I think that language was just Legislative Council placeholder language and didn't represent a policy decision, to put it, with the Attorney General. The Department of Justice would be happy to participate in any work group, formal or informal. I think it is a simpler process when it is not a statutory requirement.
All right. So what we're going to do, well, I'll work with the advocates to find out exactly where everyone's wanting to track, because if, I'm assuming that we're not looking to try to get something passed legislatively during this session, since there's been little to no work, at least that I know of, that's been to what we would be putting in. And this is one of those situations that if we're going to be establishing a set of rights above and beyond what's already there for, under victims' rights, one of those things I want to make sure we cross the Ts, dot the Is, and have it right, so we're not doing it without the thought process to ensure we've done it right. All right. Any questions or comments? Erin, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tre.
All right. That concludes the individuals who have signed up for Senate Bill 884. And what we're going to go ahead and do is close the public hearing on 884. And we have one other bill that's still open, which is Senate Bill 960. Brenda, you're scheduled to testify on that, and that's the only individual I have listed. If there's anyone else who wants to testify on 960, please come forward.
Senator Prozansky, members of the committee, my name is Brenda Tracy. No one had signed up for this one, so I just wanted, and Senator Gelsner was late, so I just wanted to make sure that you all understood, as Senator Gelsner had already said, that the committee, the task force, had already gone over this definition. Everyone is in agreement of changing this definition for anonymous kits, and I'm just here to let you know that. So it should be a pretty easy fix. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Unfortunately, it looks like we're still waiting on fiscal for that bill, and so we'll have to wait and get that before we can actually do the work session on it.
Okay.
So Brenda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on 884. And colleagues, excuse me, and I think I did on 884. I should close it on 960. I think that covers opening and closing all of the different bills. And tomorrow, as an eight o'clock start, I expect that we will have a number of people here to give testimony, based on the emails that have been coming through. So I ask that we try to get started as quick as we can. I'll be wanting to drop the gavel at 8:05 to give everyone opportunity. And then we'll see how it's working, whether or not we're going to need to limit the length of testimony, based on how many people show up. This will be one of our first ones, if we have the type of response that I expect, that we'll have a lot of people who want to be giving testimony. So with that, I appreciate everyone being here, and we're adjourned until tomorrow at eight.